All right, I'd like to call me to order, Tim, would you lead us on, please, the legislative?
General Fund, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and three cents. Sewer General, two hundred and twenty-four dollars, three hundred, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. Municipal, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents. Corrections, eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Cash Bond, seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-three cents. Judicial, five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Four and five cent gas, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Seven cent, eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Rebuild Alabama, fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Sewer Customer Deposits, thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-six cents. Sewer Capital, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. CDB Grants, thirty-four dollars and six cents. American Rescue Plan Act, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Capital Savings, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. For a grand total of one million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and one cent.
All right, I have a motion to accept the bank balances in minutes from the last meeting, is what you're referring to.
Motion.
Got a motion from Terry to have a second.
Second.
Second from Tim, all in favor. All right, so we've got a, going down the agenda here, we've got a proclamation. All right, so this proclamation reads, whereas Alabama's Human Trafficking Awareness Month was established in January 2011 in observance of National Human Trafficking Awareness Day to proclaim the equality and freedom of all people to advocate for legislation, to educate leaders, and to encourage public awareness to the various forms of human trafficking. And whereas human trafficking occurs when an adult or child is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, and other methods of slavery. And whereas the United States Government estimates that six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand individuals are trafficked across international borders each year and exploited through forced labor and forced sexual activity. And whereas the U.S. Institute Against Human Trafficking States, that the United States is the number-one consumer of commercial sex worldwide, and whereas the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children estimates that one hundred thousand to three hundred thousand children are at risk for being trafficked in the United States. And whereas in 2017, the University of Alabama identified eleven hundred and sixty-seven human trafficking victims within the state of Alabama, with fifty-seven percent of those being minors. And whereas Paris estimates that the national age of entry into the sex trade is seventeen years old. Here in the Alabama Homeland Security has identified victims as young as nine years old. And whereas the first step in eliminating human trafficking is to educate the community, we must work to ensure that all residents are aware of this problem, how to spot it, and how to report it. We must work together as a community to bring victims to safety and to punish human traffickers. And whereas we ask all residents of this community to join us in raising the visibility of this crime whose victims are all too often invisible. Together, we can become more informed and work to combat its injustices. Now, therefore, I, Tony Craig, Mayor of the City of Orange Crossroads, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Orange Crossroads, Alabama. So that's the proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness Month. All right. Ordinance number twenty-two dash zero two-nine, Christie.
Yes, sir, this is an ordinance establishing the fees for marijuana dispensaries, cultivation, et cetera, here in a business license fees for them. And it's laid out here, the, how they would be charged. Would you like an example of what the fee would cost?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so if they open with a hundred thousand dollars of product in stock, it would be a hundred dollars for the first thousand dollars of product. The remaining ninety-nine thousand would be multiplied by fifteen dollars, which would bring you to one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then an issuance fee of fourteen dollars for a grand total of one thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars for their business license. Do you want to say that?
No, your master, no, I kind of understood it that way, but I just wanted to hear it explained. Just wanted to make sure that it does that.
So, any more discussion? Do I have a motion to consider ordinance number twenty-two dash zero two-nine?
Motion to consider ordinance number twenty-two dash zero two-nine.
I got a motion by Tim, to have a second.
Second.
Second by James, all in favor. All right. All right, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash zero two-nine?
Motion to adopt.
Got a motion to adopt from James, second by Terry, all in favor. All right. We've got ordinance number twenty-two dash zero three-zero, which is establishing zoning regulations for medical cannabis facilities.
Yes, sir, this is, this was needed for zoning regulations for the medical dispenser, the medical cannabis dispensaries that have shown interest in being in Owens Crossroads. The state had provided some framework to work with. We also looked at a couple of other municipalities and copied from that. This will go along with the desires that the council discussed about being a thousand feet from schools, daycares, and churches.
So, I only have one real question on that.
Yes, sir.
Not so much that disagree with it, but something that was brought up before as well. So, um, we have a clause, and I apologize, I read a lot of this, but we had it for a couple of days. But, and there's a lot, a lot of good stuff here. So, we authorize, give a license to a place, and they build, put a place in, and then somebody doesn't like it, so they open a daycare beside it on purpose. So, what is to prevent that from happening? Is there a grandfather clause, or something that one precedes the other one?
Actually, we can deny them that business.
Okay, is that something that?
We can say that's not allowed, and that area, you're gonna have to choose a different area.
To the daycare?
Yeah, we can say that to the daycare. We don't allow you to be within a thousand feet of this, and they were here first.
That would be our policy, how we would handle it.
I think that could be, it could be, we don't have that set in stone, is that?
Yeah, that's kind of what my only concern.
Matt, does that sound right?
Yeah, I think you, you probably could operate that way, but if there is something.
I would like it in writing, not that I would want to put this off, because I really don't, this is something we need to get pushed through, but.
We do.
And I know we do. But that is, that's my, it came up in the last conversation, and it was actually almost brought up that way, you know. So that's, that's my concern, because in this particular one, the location is being considered, there used to be a daycare, it's probably still outside a thousand feet from it.
You can always do something, Council, some language, it'd be adopted, subject to the integration of language, speaking to existing structures, or something to that effect.
Should we, should we do something almost blanket for a grandfather segment for stuff like that? Make it a separate piece of legislation altogether?
There's no harm in acting that, and I don't think, since we're talking about structures that have yet to be built, so to be premature issues, and, you know, we're talking about stuff down the road. I think you could adopt this ordinance and then address any underlying needs by just having some separate stuff.
Because we have the same issue if it's a beer store. It doesn't have to be a cannabis thing, it could be a beer store, but still got the same rules, so close to schools, so close to daycare, so close to churches, right? Got the same rules. Well, you can pop a church up in any metal building anywhere now, so they stick one right beside it to keep it from going in. I mean, that's.
My, my advice would be to adopt this, because it needs to be in place, I think everybody's in agreement with that, because it's moving forward. But if there is something, something that can be done on the back end, where we could talk about just an adopt, an adopting ordinance that embraces, you know, grandfather's and existing structures, any proposed structures that within that, you know, must meet X, Y, S, we can handle it that way. I think that's a good idea, Council.
I think it's just smart across the board to prevent anything like this in the future.
You're, you're gonna have some strong opinions in relation to anything cannibalism based.
We already do. It's coming. So, that, that was my only concern. And then my only other thing, as I got, is that we may have to edit this later, because I've only had time to read really through about half of it, but.
It could be edited.
But you, but you said you copied the state stuff, and I had read a lot of the state stuff earlier.
Yes.
I, I looked at the statute that it, that it references, and this is congruent with that.
Okay, then I'm, I don't, I'm, I'm probably okay with this.
Okay, so.
I'll pop, ask some questions.
Do I have a motion to consider ordinance number twenty-two dash zero three-zero?
Motion.
All right, got a motion by Terry, second by Tim. Do I have a motion to adopt? Well, all in favor? I have a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash zero three-zero.
Motion to adopt.
Yep.
I think you can have it.
Tim's motion to adopt, you got a second? James, all in favor? Twenty-two dash zero three, ordinance to establish parking regulations for motorhomes, recreation vehicles, and utility work trailers. Jason, you want to talk about that?
Uh, yes, we've been getting some complaints from people in the neighborhoods. Other people who live in there, a few people who live in there, one of them is parking their camper on the street. Several of them are parking like their big box trailers on the street, and it's causing issues. Some of the neighbors was asking if we had anything to do that, and we do not have anything on the books that, you know, to, that deals with that. We got it for vehicles and things like that. Uh, and also, from what the neighbors are saying, you know, they don't want it to restrict, you know, somebody like their kid, they're having a get-together or something like that, and people parking on the street. But they say, you know, it is a growing headache that people are leaving these campers and utility trailers and stuff on the street. You know, not for overnight, but, you know, for days, weeks at a time, and it's just becoming a disorder, and just becoming an issue with them. Uh, so that's why we kind of created that.
Some of our neighborhood streets aren't even seventeen feet wide, and then when you put an RV out there, you thoroughly are getting passed.
Bristol-Quayle, you can't.
Sir?
Bristol-Quayle, say, "Dapple."
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And we thought with Matt, and he said, absolutely, what we could do is, you know, after we follow through with the guidelines of the ordinance, or of the penalty phases, that we do have the right to have it removed off the driveway at that point.
So, a couple of things.
If they, if they refuse, if they refuse to.
Yeah, I, I get it, and I, it makes more sense, when I, when I read it the first time, it didn't, because I'm like, you can't park a trailer on Old Highway 431.
Right.
You can't park a trailer on K-Spring Road, it's only got to be the small subdivisions. And they're twenty-five to fifteen miles an hour, how big of an issue is it, right? And I, and in my mind, of course, I don't live there, it didn't make sense to me. This does. Um, questions I would have, to me, reading through this, and this is when I spent most of my time, I kind of got hung up on this one, because it's actually two different, or two different things put together, is what it is. You're creating an OEO official, and you're doing this at the same time, they're actually, they should be broken up, they shouldn't be one thing. But on the, but if I take it apart, and look at just the first part, I get the, the spirit, and I don't disagree with it, I understand where you're going with it. But there's nothing to allow for commercial activity, say, grass cutters, because they're not parking in the yards, they're gonna have to park on the street.
Now, now, what I would say on that was, I'd say, active, you know, they're actively working, you know, you know, they're parking there, you know, you know, I'm, you know, this is.
Yeah, I, I get the spirit of it, but should we put something in there that says temporary commercial use, or something along those lines? Would that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, we absolutely could, because, I mean, I see what you're saying on that, too, you know, somebody could say, well, regardless of what it says, I definitely understand that.
And then I, I look at it like, you know, because you're still gonna get into some discretion on this, right? So, I got, I paid to store my motorhome, which, if you live in those subdivisions, you probably should, because it's not gonna fit in the driveway. Um, and I'm gonna bring it out and pack it for a week. Because sometimes we pack for a week, sometimes we pack for a day and try to get out of town before the police find us, it just depends, where we're after, right? So, it just depends. Um, so, I wonder if there's some language in there, temporary parking, not to exceed.
Do they do that like seventy-two hours? Or something, or something, yeah.
I think you should just say a day, because if you go through there at ten o'clock at night, it shouldn't be there.
Yeah.
It should go home with them.
I would, I would say, I would say seventy-two, in my mind, is not enough.
Yeah, it's not enough.
But it has to be.
When you allow seventy-two hours, then you're allowing mama and popo to park on the street while they're visiting.
I get your, and so I, so as soon as I say it, I immediately play the devil's advocate in my head, and I get, you gotta put something on it, and it needs to be confined to something. Um, but, but again, but, but, but you do have something in here that, I guess if somebody called and complained, you're not gonna go looking for it, right? So if somebody calls and complains, you give them seven days, because you do, that's part of this, right?
Yes, sir.
So you got seventy-two, well, it hadn't been here for seventy-two hours, I'm not gonna say anything, but if it's been over seventy-two hours, then, but then you've got seven days before it becomes an issue. A real issue, right?
Yeah, or we can do it, you know.
I don't know what that.
Seventy-two hours, and then seventy-two hours after warning.
That's an, that's an interesting thought. That, that's an interesting way to look at it. So you have seventy-two hours from the time you're warned.
Right.
And then you have seven days from the time you're warned before the fines start. Or does the, the fines move to the seventy-two hour point, and the seven days goes away?
Well, I would say, maybe, like, if we go talk to somebody, uh, that anything left over seventy-two hours, you'll be warned. After warning, you'll have seventy-two hours to, to, to resolve it.
I see where this is going, I think, I think there's some thoughts, I don't, I don't disagree with it, and I agree that you need something, otherwise, what can you do, right? You're, you're stuck. And they, they can, they can, and I, and I, I don't necessarily like it, but I agree with it. I understand the spirit of what you do.
And like you said, storage, that's what some of, that's what one of the people was actually saying, they said, you know, you know, I pay three hundred dollars a month to store my camper, you know, over here, at the.
And this guy just works in the street.
He's just parking his in the street, and I do mine like that?
If you park well on each side, then what do you do?
Yeah.
All of a sudden, you've got an emergency access problem, and, and that, that falls into a whole other issue. I get that. Um, I, I would like a little more language to allow for commercial use.
Okay.
And, um, I would like something that, um.
Because now, let's say you own a business, well, if you pull your truck up here at night, and you leave your spring hooked up, well, of course, you're gone in the morning. You know, you're gone all day long in your backyard, you know, I get that, absolutely. Or if, you know, you got somebody coming through that's, you know, just doing the work, and they park there, you know, because there's no.
Well, yeah, my mind immediately goes to the grass cutters.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying.
Because, you know, we all had that summer job, and you try to get everybody on that street, right?
And there's a lot of that that goes on.
And there's absolutely no way they're gonna park in the driveway.
Right, yeah.
They mark, they unload, and they run that, that strip, and then they, they load up, and they move on, that's, that's what they do. And playing devil's advocate, worst case, you know, every time they park on the street, somebody could go through and go, yeah, you can't be here.
Right, right.
Well, that's, that's, so we gotta give a little bit of, not that, not that I think that would happen, but it's, you know.
Maybe, because.
And that's, that's, that's.
You never know.
It gives them a little protection. And I, and I want something personally, just to give the folks a camp, give them enough time to load and unload their trailer. At seventy-two hours?
Seventy, who, who, playing campers and work with campers for years. Sometimes you get away with that, and sometimes you pull it out of storage, and it takes you four days, because one little thing is broken, and you're trying to pack and fix that one little thing. I think that, I understand the gist of this, but, uh, I think it needs to be worded, where you can't just go out, you know, because every other, twice a month, somebody's gonna be parked in front of their, their house, trying to get any, so they leave it, you know. I used to leave at five o'clock in the morning to beat the hospital traffic. Well, I can't go to storage and get something out of storage, because I don't have, have that problem, but if I did, you know, uh, I don't, I don't want it to become, I understand the problem, but people parking, you know, and just permanently leaving something there is one thing, but people coming and going, that's part of where you live.
Yes, yeah, and I get that, too, I sure do. So, yeah, we definitely go back to the wording.
I think a little bit of rewording, and when we do this, this whole E, OEO part needs to come out, because that's a whole separate.
It falls under, uh, the community enforcement officer that Polly put in place, but it just, it just says ordinance.
Well, you're creating a position.
It's not creating it, it's just the same thing, he would be the same one that would report the first violation.
So, in the one that, that's already been created, it gives whoever carped blocks to walk on somebody's property without permission or notice, and inspect for any violation they want? Because that's exactly what this says they can do. That's scary. That's, this says.
I hear, I understand what you're saying.
That you're gonna assign somebody, and then they're gonna assign somebody else, who knows who that person is? Because you got the, the OEO, and then whoever they delegate past that, and however many people that can be, that can walk on anybody's property and inspect for any violation they can find.
We will correct that.
I would prefer all this OEO stuff to come out and be written in a separate document. You can still leave the penalties, if you don't, just like we deal with everything else that doesn't reference an OEO position, you can still leave the penalties in there, but all this OEO stuff is scary.
My, my, should we table this till, should we, we?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
So. Yeah, I would, I would be good with, with some, some edits from Jason on, on how he wants to do the trailer stuff. And even the penalties for the, because they, they should fall in, I didn't go back and reference, but they should follow in line with other things, we've already, penalties for like the same kind of ordinance violations, and as long as all that follows suit. But all the OEO stuff needs to be a separate disgust.
I think maybe we just can't get to the OEO, the law enforcement.
I think so.
That's fine.
However you want to handle it, I mean, because technically, it's, it's.
It should be OEO, wouldn't it?
Yeah, because, because, yeah, when you, when you actually read this, it talks about zoning, which you don't mention anything, if it talks about zoning, it talks about all kinds of things that two don't reference each other at all.
Yeah.
And this was, when you read it, you don't need to go on somebody's property and inspect for a trailer violation in the road.
Right.
And that's what this says, so, uh, that's why, that's why I'm pushing back on that.
I got you on that.
So, because y'all don't even have that authority, as much as y'all wish, and we all wish you did sometimes. You don't.
Yeah, we had to go through a lot.
All right, so what table, what table thirty-one?
That pesky constitution.
Yeah, it's bad.
So, ordinance twenty-two dash zero three-two, business license issuance fee for internet providers, Christie.
Uh, this is just to make sure that we had all of our I-DOT and N-T's crossed, we did not have this, any, any ICS code implemented in our business license, but we do have internet providers in the community that need to have the appropriate license and license code. Is that correct, Theresa? Yes. So this is just covering us, this would cover New Hope Telephone Company, Comcast, and other providers that are, that are in.
Does this, is this wired providers only, or does it include any satellite-based service?
Any internet service provider.
So, okay, so that covers satellites as well?
Yes.
Any other questions? Motion to consider twenty-two dash zero three-two. All right, I got a motion to consider from Tim, to have a second of the motion to consider. Second from Terry, all in favor? All right, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two dash zero three-two? Got a motion to adopt from James, second from Tim, all in favor? Uh, okay, we got a resolution to approve a quote from YNS paving to perform specific asphalt repairs in Genuin subdivision. Any?
We want to discuss, look public about what we're very concerned about.
Let me, let me run through that.
Okay.
They broke this thing out in several ways, and you look at options, and start the very top of their quote. Uh, the top of the engineers, we want to go with the, with the concrete instead of asphalt on the first one. And all the rest of them, the engineer recommended that we go with the baby binder. So, so the prices you'd be looking at on this would be, the first would be for the concrete work, uh, on that one, one intersection, and the rest of it would be for baby binder, and that's what our engineer recommends. And it's somewhere, I'm thinking around forty-five thousand?
It's forty-four thousand, sixty dollars for the one company, and the other company was sixty-eight thousand, one hundred.
That's, that's doing the concrete, the baby binder?
Yes, sir, that's the highest, yes.
Even though.
As close as it could have been.
Yes, sir.
All right, so do I have a motion to?
Really quickly, are they doing the, the crack ceiling as well to prevent future?
YNS is, YNS quoted to do that. Since this was issued for the meeting, SJNL asked to remove that from their quote.
This includes all the, with the, not the small cracks, with the wide cracks, that'll just run right down the middle of the road.
Yes, sir.
They got a machine that heats the tar, and it actually pours it right into crack season.
Yeah, they've got the cost here, it's the last item in their quote.
The last item is just by the foot, depending on how many.
Linear foot.
Linear foot that they have to do.
They says approximately two thousand linear feet.
That's the estimate.
So will this quote potentially change based on how much they do?
If they find some other cracks that they need to do, yeah.
So do we need to pass this with a ten thousand dollar?
Yeah.
Not, it, it cannot exceed fifty thousand.
Just pass it at forty-nine.
Forty-nine thousand?
Yeah. So, do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash zero four-zero at a cost of forty-nine thousand dollars?
Not exceed forty-nine thousand?
Not to exceed forty-nine thousand.
Motion.
Got a motion from Terry?
Second.
Second from Tim, all in favor? All right. Then we have resolution twenty-two dash zero forty-one, which is adoption of the employee's safety manual.
And I talked to Christie earlier, and this came from AMIC from our insurance group, so it's a, and she said that you had been through this pretty, pretty thoroughly as well.
Yeah.
So, it has your buy-off on it.
It has my buy-off on it.
And all the AMIC stuff that I've seen's been pretty, pretty thorough, so.
Tim, you got anything on this, you good? Tim?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Terry, you good with this?
Good.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash zero four-one?
Motion to adopt.
Got a motion to adopt from James, second from Terry, all in favor? So, go around the little compartments, Tim, you got anything?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
All right, Theresa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for taking my business license renewals, all nine hundred, what was it, nine hundred and fifty-five of them to the postal service. Please make some reminders response already, coming back, positive coming back, not being returned by the mail. But people that are sending them back and calling in, paying over the phone for their business licenses. Um, I mean, it's, it's just amazing how many are responding, and last year, we went two or three weeks before we got even three or four. And so I think taking them to the main postal hub on Triana Boulevard, or Waltrianna. was was very beneficial, and I thank you for doing that. I have several sewer accounts that are dreadfully past due that those people are gonna be getting letters from me, and I hate to say it, but it's Christmas, and they're still gonna have to get sewer letters because their bills, they know their bills have to be paid, and these are people that are repeat getting behinders. If they would just call me and make arrangements, and when they make arrangements, stick to what they tell me they will do. If you tell me that you will be here and make a payment on X date, I'm gonna work with you on that. But four weeks later, when you still haven't shown up, that's not cutting it, so. Anyhow.
Thank you.
What, I'm working on it.
What's the deadline for the business license again, just so?
Um, they start, they're not due to start being renewed until January the first, and then it's by January thirty-first they have to be done before they start looking at penalties accruing. So between January first and January thirty-first. But they can be done early if somebody wants to do it.
Thank you, Theresa. Randy, can you give us a report about the quarters?
I'm due. So far this um, this month, we've adjudicated a hundred and two cases. We brought in, so far as today, we brought in fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Um, I've entered twelve citations, three MC cases, sent eight to driving school, I did two warrants. Um, I've had some of the defendants come in and really commend our police officers, even though they got a citation. There was like, you know, the officers were extremely respectable to them. They were very thorough, and um, I also got some comments that I've been handling, you know, the um, the offenders, you know, they they appreciate the respect that I give them. Um, so that's that's just a little bit of feedback that my department's giving.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Bruce, you got anything?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council, we are every one point five calls per day for service right at the moment. Uh, so we're we're continuing to build on our response. Uh, wanted to pass on to the council, had a great time Saturday at the Christmas parade, looking forward to next year.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Christie?
Um, I've got the safety manual done that you asked us to work on this year. Jason and I worked on that, we got it done. Uh, we're working on end of year financing, finances, stuff like that, and have several irons in the fire right now. Uh, working with Jake on the wastewater treatment plant status, and I have an update from him. Says that he received the final geotechnical report for the wastewater treatment plant. Basically, the long and short of it is that the site is not great, but it is feasible. It will require deep foundation, but not excessively costly. He had them evaluate property across the street from soil classification with no intrusive drilling, and the engineer is confident that sole results from alternate nearby sites would not provide any better options. His recommended course of action is to proceed with the existing city-owned property as the project site. So, that's that, that's all I have.
Good. Jason?
Uh, no, sir, nothing. Everything's nice, quiet, nice mood. Uh, I'll give my monthly report at the next council meeting.
Okay, we got a letter from the Scottsboro Police Department, Chief Ron Latimer. It's addressed to Chief Dobbins, says on November ninth, twenty twenty-two, a work release inmate from the Scottsboro City Jail escaped from custody and stole a Chevrolet pickup truck belonging to the Scottsboro Solid Waste Department. Information was received that this person had twelve associates in the Owens Crossroads area, and you were contacted, you being Chief Dobbins, by Detective Sergeant from the Scottsboro Police Department, who requested that you be on the lookout for the stolen pickup truck and the escapee. Within a half hour of receiving this information, you had located and recovered the stolen vehicle on Bird Lane in Owens Crossroads, as well as the suspect, and had him successfully placed in custody. Your rapid response and assistance to the Scottsboro Police Department is greatly appreciated. This along with your investigative skills and knowledge of your community is a testament to your character and quality as a law enforcement. This gets kind of deep, don't it? You're a law enforcement officer. The city of Owens Crossroads is well-served by having a law enforcement officer of your caliber leading its department. So thank you.
I will speak. I will say I couldn't have done it without my backup, Ms. Laura and Ms. Christian. They were along for the ride with me on that, so.
All right. All right, so, I think we're done here. Mr. Dunn?
No doubt in heaven, I had to fix drunk surgery. I live on the Aspirant Road. They put a subdivision in. Um, on the Aspirant and Lions Road. And I live right next to that subdivision they put in. And back, uh, August the twenty-third, they came in there, uh, Grayson's son dug a dirt truck on the property zone, and they dug up all the roots on the tree. Now, I'm at forty trees fall over, and I don't know how to clean them up. They fall over, they take the power lines out. They take the power lines out, and I got five, five trees now, probably fifty-six foot tall. They're dying. And what's, after August twenty-third, about thirty-four months later, they went in there and dug down six foot deep. I'd like for y'all to see these pictures. You know, how these trees are standing, I don't know. They mean a life and families, they're dope, they're going and out the uh, highway, buddy. For this. All right, Grace, just look through, that's a two foot or three, and you hold on, you say six foot when they dug down. And I'm cleaning them up, while a tree falling, I don't get to hustle each other back, I got to pump the line back up. And I told them about it, and they said, hey, they're trees, they're your worry, they're trees. They kill the trees when they dug it up. I mean, they got three of the trees on their property line, Doug. Two trees that don't mind, I mean, they tried on the property line. Tree damage was falling, lot falling off, bark's just falling off of the tree. And back last summer, they went in there and dug up eight fifteen feet over my yard, dug up four trees. And y'all gonna believe it, dug up four of my trees out of my yard, and drug them back away and cut them up firewoods. And left me one empty tree right there. And then two loggers, before that, logger got in that logging, dirt trees, knocked a tree over on my shop. Took my workshop out, made some driveway up, had a block ball there to get out. Tree fell over on the on the work truck, took out a a rime home with one particular old. I mean, I mean, I got pictures of that, too. I want to show them that, that's. But I'm more concerned trying to get them trees cut before they do fall. And they're right there, eight, eight to twelve, two thousand. Twenty-one. Try to call them, they won't return your call, if you go over there and stand like an idiot, they just run them down. They won't look at you, they dodge you, you leave it out on the door. Tell them, please call me, I'll come by the house, I'm done, you're right next door. I'm not done, I'm not done, my driveway looking at, make a drive off.
So?
There be trees. There be trees right here. See, that's what I'm trying to say, by this picture right here, there be trees. The roots did not grow in the ground. That that land is so much swamp land that the roots are growing right on top of the ground. And I don't. And then they go. Let me show you after. That's what they done right here, even think it's stoned for the tree to fail. And they just, they just left the stone there, they. That's one tree right there in my yard, right there, and I go ahead and cut it, pull it out. I care for to get a tree guy to come out there and cut them.
Mr. Mayor, Council, could I speak up?
Yes, sir.
Sir, my name's Matt Walsh. If you want to hang around after the council meeting, I'd be happy to speak with you about what you're presenting and, you know, kind of give me the details. Did you appear at the planning commission last night?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my partner was at the planning commission, so I'd be happy. If you just want to hang tight, you and I will step out in the hallway and talk and and go over anything that we need to know, okay? And what would you have against our authority?
Oh, no, done. Oh, any, yeah, yeah, done, do you hear?
Just hang tight, and I'll get up with you. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Madison, picture. Don't look before it.
All right, so we'll go around the table. Tim, you got anything? Tim? Yeah.
No.
Terry, you got anything?
More like, uh, our inspector for all this hard work in these subdivisions, helping to get some of these roads fixed. He's been out there walking a lot, he's got his good exercise in, and he is, we got some things resolved, and we'll get started, some roads passing. Maybe make people happy for five, five to ten seconds, we're lucky, so. But, well, thank you for his, for the steps he's took in these subdivisions, and I've walked with him some, but and he's put a lot of effort in, so thank you for it. That's it.
James?
A couple of quick things. Um, I want to say it was an honor to spend Christmas parade in the truck with Bruce. Had to talk to him the first time since he's been with us. Um, appreciate the hard work, the truck cleaned up, getting ready to go. Um, it was uh, good to represent our growing fire department, um, getting there slowly. Um, but, and uh, Matt, um, you're gonna be busy afterwards, so I'm not gonna be near you now. But I'm gonna need time in the next few days. Um, I've drawn up this other thing we need to, for hiring contract labor for the fire department. We talked about this a couple of times back and forth. Um, and I will send an email out, um, and then you and I get together and finish it up, and I will hopefully present it at the next meeting.
Terry, I know there was some conversation with individuals from Hansford, did that bear fruit?
It did not. So I've I've gone through the trouble of writing what I, the draft of it, complete in entirety. So then you can take it apart from there and make it make sense from there.
If if you want to email that to me, I'm gonna be sitting at my desk all morning.
I'm gonna shoot you Christie and the mayor and Shannon, so we can all be privy to the changes that go through, because it's not perfect, and I know that, but I've got the draft put together, um, the whole thing drawn out. Um, and, because that's the next step in helping our fire department be more successful, is getting some contract labor. So that's what I got, so. I'm thankful for the calls that are being made, um, the response that we're getting, and the hard work that they are putting in, so. All again, sir.
All right, can you go back?
Mr. Mayor, could I, actually, I'm like.
Yes, sir.
Tom got up with Jake and kind of went around, kind of get a better idea of, I know there was some bulk of the conversations today, it's related to subdivision and growth. And so we wanted to familiarize ourselves kind of with the plan for Owens Crossroads. We talked about this in a meeting, where, you know, Tom and I, our offices are Madison-Hustle, we're familiar with the area, but the actual, you know, dirt. What's what's being done, what are we gonna have to deal with? Um, and so that was something that I published yesterday. The only, the only thing I've, you know, kind of mentioned, um, there's some follow-up with some things that we we spoke with people that are represented by council, and we've reached out to them, and we'll keep you guys in the loop on that. Um, and I guess the last thing, which is this letter from Chief Laber to Chief Dobbins. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, it's awfully laudatory, it has all the elements of some ghostwriting, but Chief. Chief Dobbins has done a good job, and I think it's important as counsel, for what we see about Owens Crossroads, Mr. Bingham has clearly been accused of undertaking an action. So as far as any reference made in the council session to actions undertaken by the division, we would reiterate that those are accusations. Want to clean that up for the.
All right.
I'd like the young lady who put this Christmas parade together, please stand. And we, she did an awesome job. It went real well, and thank you.
Thank you for helping me.
I didn't do nothing, I stayed out of the way. You've been getting run over, but we appreciate your work, we want you to, unfortunately, see it.
It went really good, and we had the Shriner's for the first time, and I've been trying for two years to get them. And I I finally got them, and they were, they were happy to be here, and they said they would be back because they liked the way that we did our Christmas parade. And they don't go to a lot of the other large Christmas parades because they're just too commercialized anymore, and they don't want to be associated with it. So they like our way that we did it here, and they will be back. And we had two bands scheduled, and one band had to drop out because they lost their band director. The night before, that band director resigned from that high school. And so they didn't get to come that Saturday morning, but we got through it, and we had a good band from New Hope and everything. It's the first time they've been able to schedule to come, and uh, uh, we had a lot of, a lot of people to get to come, so. But it went well, I thought. Hopefully, we'll get to do it next year, depending on the weather.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn, Tim to have a second, second, Terry, all in favor? All right, thank y'all for your time and service.